Guys, ready? Okay, we'll call the workshop to order. First, I want to apologize, we're getting started a little bit late. We had some technical difficulties and hopefully we'll get those fixed and ready for the regular council meeting, but I understand we are able to at least record it and we'll play it back. So, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning? Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here.
I move where you excuse Kenny, I think he's out of town.
Second.
Mr. Henning, excuse me.
Motion to excuse Mr. Henning for not only the workshop, but also the council meeting. He is out of town and we knew that. And that was made by Mr. Gorman and second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Okay, so we're gonna have our workshop discussion tonight and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Schweitzer.
Alright, so first one is go through the trends and the revenue expenditures we're seeing right now, based over the past couple of years, just to get us a...
Kevin?
Yeah?
I have one question, the same as every year. Personal service means personnel, right?
Right, it means payroll, yes. So, we'll start with the general fund, which is our main operating fund. And you can see the personal service has stayed pretty consistent over the last two years and this year. Total expenses have went up within the general fund and that would include some of the transfers that we're doing. On the police side, we've actually seen a little decrease. Well, the last two years are pretty even. We did have some retirements within there and have some younger patrolmen on duty now. So, but looking at the total expenses, you'll see that first year of 2021 was about 2.6 million. That is the year that we spent a significant amount of money on the body cameras. So, that kinda skewed the expenses, so it'd be about even. So, again, they're staying consistent. Fire department, we have seen a slight increase in personal service as far as getting more full timers versus the part timers and with the collaborative. And then, like I said, the total expenses are only about $200,000 difference between the two years there. So, there's no real big jumps that we're seeing in any of the departments. Same with service department.
Can I have a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I see that the 2023 numbers are through October 31st.
Right, that's why you're...
So, I mean, your best guess, are 2023 is gonna be similar to 2022's? Or will they exceed those?
They'll be similar to 2022's, just slight increases for the, you know, the steps and the cost of living that we've applied in there. We're still working within the budget that you approved last year. I have been moving a lot of line items around to make up where we're short. One line item, I'll move it to another, that we know we're not gonna use that. So, we're still utilizing the same budgeted numbers you gave us, but I think, yeah, it's on.
I just wanna point out that they will, there will be increases on all of these for...
Yeah.
For years now.
2022 made some big jumps over 2021.
Right.
And what was the reason for that you just said?
Brian can back me up on this, but I believe it's when...
I know COVID just ended in 2022, but...
That's when we started going with more full-time employees. I think that's when the lieutenants came on with the collaborative. We had, so we had some increases there, moved from a part-time, less part-time to more full-time staff at the fire.
With the last contract negotiations with fire, we actually implemented the lieutenants' pay, because before they were, I think they made a dollar is what they were getting paid above everybody else. And now they have the actual pay scale.
So, with the service department, they are pretty consistent over there. Hasn't been much change with them on the payroll side. With total expenses, 2022, we did have an increase. We did utilize some of the budget to budget for Hope Road Engineering that we have to... We've been putting back about $325,000 a year for about four, four or five years to get that project ready to go. We did utilize those funds that year, so that's why you're seeing a skew there. Then on the golf side, you'll see we did jump up in 2022 with payroll. We did go to running the grill ourselves now. So, you'll see that and having the bartenders in the snack bar, so we have that. And then, we've had a number of rounds of increase too, so you need more workers to help with getting the carts out and handling the customers. It's all, it's all... Yes. And then, in the total expenses in 2022, we had about, when we started bringing up the snack bar, we had to buy the equipment for the snack bar and operating that. Plus, we started buying our alcohol and reselling that, so that's included in those expenses. That's why there's a jump there. So, been making some money on the alcohol. And then the big, big thing with the general fund is the transfers that we send out. So, you can see that the 2021, 2022 actual transfers to the CIP, police, fire, EMS, service and debt service are there, as well as what we budgeted 2023 and 2024, what we're talking about doing. So, in 2021, we did $2.7 million in transfers. This year, we did three point, about 3.3 and still about almost 3.4 that we're looking at next year. It's just the nature of the expenses, you know, cost of the personnel, as well as any of the supplies, materials going up and revenues are not keeping up with the expenses. Talking about revenues, most of these, you can see, they're pretty consistent. There's no big jumps. You do see one for 2022 in the capital improvement projects fund. That was when we entered into some leases for dump trucks. We had that, it's an accounting entry where we book the proceeds of the lease, but then we use those to pay for the trucks, but then we have to make the debt payments. So, it's kind of double booking, but it's what's required of us. So, that's why you'll see an increase there on the revenue side with just the proceeds of the lease we did for the dump trucks that we have not received yet. But again, it's a pretty, pretty level of what we're supplementing that, or what the revenues bring in in each department. So, you see the police and fire with the property taxes, you know, and there's, that were capped at all those, all those levies, so there's nothing more gonna be coming in. So, that's why you're seeing consistent revenues coming in with that, so... So, these next slides to show you the revenues and expenditure versus expenditures. So, in 2021, there's about a $600,000 difference between the revenues and expenditures. Then in 2022, it jumped to 1.7. This year, we looked at a 1.8 difference, looking at about a 1.7 next year. So, you can see that's adding up and eating away at our fund balance over the years. The capital improvement projects fund, it receives a third of the income tax right now. And usually, we try to only spend what we bring in with income tax. And you can see that usually for 2021, 2022, actual revenues were greater than expenditures. 2023, we did utilize more funds to get some projects done. And then next year, we did do some significant cuts from what was originally proposed by staff, so that we do have revenues that are exceeding expenditures, so we're not utilizing any transfers from the general fund for any CIP projects.
Why is the revenue so much lower in 2023 than 2022, Kevin?
Just in amount of projects we did this year with the... Budgeted. No, that's why you're seeing expenses outweigh the revenues, because we utilized the fund balance. We had some carryover fund balance beginning of 2023, so we utilized that for projects this year. So, we've used that up. And so, again, there's a budget of numbers. I know the actuals, you're gonna see it's higher because we have some, again, we had some leases we brought in this year, but we used the fund balance that we had carried over, which we don't have anything really to carry over for next year. Again, the police department is pretty even. They, there's $200,000 difference in 2022. And again, that's when we did the body cameras, but they're pretty even all the years that we have here. Fire department as well, do see expenditures going up with them. And again, the fire department, most of these are attributed to personnel. It's, that's their, they have, they're the department with the biggest percentage of their operating budget is for payroll. So, with all the, all the, like I said, the new hires, the steps, lieutenants, so we're seeing that. And again, it's, the tax levies are not coming in anymore, so that, you know, you can utilize more and more with the transfers from the general fund. Service department, always with theirs, they have a lot more cost in the materials. Salt is always going up, asphalt, catch basins. So, they have a little bit more variances, but it's not much. First year was about $500,000 and in 2023 was $500,000 and next year, we're looking at about a $250,000 difference. They do get gas tax within the service fund, but there's no property tax for them, so there's no road levies or anything, so it's all dependent on the state, gas tax and then transfers from the general fund to cover those expenses.
I'm gonna interrupt you just for a second, kind of go back to something you'd mentioned. Again, I think this is something that we've talked about, but we need to figure out a way, excuse me, to communicate the whole property tax scenario. Because, you know, people think, well, the property taxes are going up, so the city should be, you know, getting more and more money, and that's just not the case. And I think, I don't know how we educate people on that, but I think that's, you know, we need to figure some way to communicate that out there. Because although people pay more taxes, you know, we don't, we don't get any more money from that. And as expenses continue to go up, you know, as you can see, we're getting ourselves in a bind here, so...
Mayor, I had the experience of listening to Carl Keith at a meeting here a short while ago, and I spoke to Amanda about it, and I think if we brought Carl in, he explains it very well in layman's terms, if I could understand it, a lot of people can understand it. But Carl did a very good job of it, and I talked to Amanda, possibly having him at one of our meetings after the first of the year probably, because busy times now, but, but Mike, I think that would be a...
Okay. Then the last department is at Meadowbrook. Again, with the golf course in Ohio, you're looking at nine, 10 months of revenue coming in, you know, nice, but then the other times are really lean. So, that's why you're seeing the significant variances in the expenditures versus revenue. One thing that does help us is in the general fund, from the way we budget, we budget conservative on the revenue and we do not spend everything that we get in expenses. So, a lot of times, we get more revenue in than we use for the budget, which is a good thing. I'd rather do that than say we're gonna, a bunch of money and we don't get it in, then we're gonna have to cut the budget. So, we do, you know, go conservative on the revenues and then, I said, we do not utilize all the expenditures. So, we always, like in 2020, we expected to start out at 2.2 million and we actually started out with 4.7. We had that way, big jumps through this year, through '21 and '22. You'll see in '23, it's closed because our fund balance is shrinking. We anticipated opening the year with 1.7 million and we end, opened it with 3.7. So, that's one good thing we have, so it kind of buys us a little time, not much, because as you can see, it's, the fund balance is going down and even if we budget conservatively, it's, that's not enough to keep up. So, with the 2024 budget, we're looking at revenues of about $12,664,000. That does not include the transfers of roughly 3.4 million we need to make to the police, fire, service, debt service funds to pay those obligations. Income taxes, small increase for next year. I did not take into account if we, you know, if we do have the levy that comes in and passes. And so, I just worked off what we have, so small increase in income taxes. And something new this year is we have a full year of the building department charges. They weren't included in last year's budget, so they were still being talked about when we were doing it. We did have increases in green fees and cart rentals and alcohol sales down at Meadowbrook, so we did see, we have seen an increase in those over the past few years, so it's trending up. We are, right now, getting, you know, some good interest on our, on our deposits in the bank, as well as our investments, but as our fund balances go down, there's less money to invest, so you'll see those investment earnings shrink as well. And looking at, we did a lot of negotiable CDs because the principal's safe and you can pick what term you want, and right now, the way the interest rates are, they're getting a good interest rate for one year. If you go out, you start going out, then the interest rates are dropping because they're anticipating that they're gonna be, the interest rates will be dropping here soon. They don't wanna be stuck to a, you know, long-term CD where they're paying a higher interest rate than what actually is out in the market. So, like I said, that will affect us as far as a decreasing fund balance will affect our interest earnings.
Kevin, how soon do we retire any debt?
It's, it seems for some reason, all of it hits in 2030. The Commerce Park, I think Hope Road and Kimmel. The 2016 road we did was 15 years, so that's 2031. So, it's down the road, but it all comes due around the same time. So, there will be, you know, influx there of, not have to make those debt payments, but...
Yeah, but that's six years away.
Yes. So, looking at the general fund, which includes, included Meadowbrook with this, you can see the biggest, biggest income we have in the general fund is the income tax. You know, two-thirds of our income tax goes to the general fund. We have one, one general fund levy for property taxes that count for 10%. And then, charges for services, which is mainly the golf courses at 16%.
What is intergovernmental, Kevin?
That means money's from the state, from the county, so any grants, local government fund we get from the state, that's what that means. Looking at the police department, their property taxes are 42%, but unfortunately, right now, transfers are budgeted at 46%. So, you know, the majority of their income's coming from transfers. Then we do get some intergovernmental with some grants and from, for some, some of the bulletproof vest programs and training programs. But as you can see, you know, the police are definitely relying on the transfers more than anything. Fire department, their levies are coming in with 38%, but right behind it is the transfers at 36. So, they do have a nice charges for services. That's the EMS billing that we do for the medic runs and so we do collect on that. But again, it's getting to the, about even for property taxes versus transfers. The service department, luckily, with the gas tax and permissive tax that we receive, that makes up the majority of their, their income, but they still do get 42% of their income from transfers from the general fund. So, you can consistently see these transfers are dwindling the general fund and it's a, you know, it's a burden on the general fund each year. Looking at the expenses, I know on the personnel side, there's a 2% cost of living accounted for in there. Includes a pay incentives for the police and fire contracts that we're obligated to pay. We are, did budget for one less police officer, one less battalion chief and one full-time golf course grounds position. We know a couple are retiring, other ones are leaving, which is not gonna fill it. So, we did, we did do some, basically not filling any positions there that, that we can do without, so... Also, within the budget, we did remove all the community events and commitments. So, you're talking about the fireworks, anything that had costs associated with that. We did do some supports for people wanting auctions and we helped them with that. We did, we did take those out of the budget this year. Again, we talked about, we trimmed the CIP to be funded only by the income tax. So, I know within the CIP, there's, there'll be no road work done next year, so... Plus, there's other, there's other equipment purchases and, and things we're gonna do that we cut. So, you can see that for next year, our total budget has decreased $3.7 million, which is good, but it's still, we're still utilizing a lot of monies from the general fund, so...
Well, it's good in one way, it's good for the money part, but it's not good in every other way, because we're taking out especially the community events.
Right.
Those are things that...
Yeah.
You know, that's why you have an organized city, you know, you have events like that or you have, you know, you work on the roads and you make improvements.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, we are a service organization, so that's where all our costs, our personnel. So, really to save any kind of money, you're gonna have to cut people. But by us cutting people, that means we're cutting the, you know, the necessities that the residents need, the police, the fire, the roads. So, it, you know, cutting the community stuff, we want to do that. We wanna reach out to our citizens and have these events, but I think, you know, to make sure we have the monies to fund, fund the emergency services and the roads, you know, we gotta look at what we gotta do. I mean, my job'd be easier if I had a bunch of money, you know. I wouldn't sit there in stress and try to move monies around and...
Well, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, you know, it is, it is a serious issue.
Yeah.
Do we count leaf pickup as a community event?
That would be, and I know we did reduce fuel and, we did reduce fuel and, and some of the equipment maintenance in the, in the service, so that is looking at if, you know, leaf services cut.
So, we'll have no leaf pickup next fall then?
That's what's planned, is no leaf pickup by the city. Now, our waste hauler will collect the leaves if residents rake them and bag them and put them on the curb, so they will still have that option or they can mulch them.
Yeah. You gotta get out there with your shovel and do it yourself. No, we'll still, with the snow removal, it's still, we have to, that helps our police and fire when they were responding to, if, you know, if we said we're not gonna plow, then, yeah, puts them in peril, so...
So, the sweep Clayton events that come up in the spring and the fall are...
Those are, those are not included in this budget.
Because those come through the waste hauler.
No, they're contracted separately from our waste hauler.
I think it's still...
It's the, yeah, it's the staffing.
Staffing part.
It's the overtime, yeah, it's the people.
You can still do bulk pickup, you know, call and order that.
You can still do bulk pickup through our waste hauler.
Those events essentially would be affected by that.
Yes, those events would be affected by this, as well as the shredding event.
However, potentially moving forward, if something were to change mid-year that...
Yeah, this...
Essentially...
Yes, it's something that can be reassessed.
Essentially can amend something, so it's not absolute that thou shalt not do this.
Yes.
It's all subject to potentially what happens in March.
Yes.
Yeah, this is a fluid document, I know, I come back to you, make changes to it all the time, so we can definitely do that.
So, Kevin, and I know this is for 2023, make the assumption that the income tax does not pass. What are we looking for? Are we gonna have to continue to do cuts like this in '25, '26?
I did do the, I know you requested projections, so we have those coming up, so we...
Okay, then ignore my question.
So, looking at the individual department expenses, with the general fund, you look there and you see the biggest expense they have is transfers out, it's at 58%. And then the others are the personnel and then contractual services. But again, like I said, you know, transfers out's the largest expense item we have. In the police, you're looking at, personal services are at 83%. So, then some contractual services, which are like dispatch and, and some of the public defender and prosecutor charges, but that's about it. So, they're sitting at 83% and like I said before, the fire, they're at 87% is all personnel, so that's where all your expenses are. You got some material and supplies in there and some repair and maintenance, but like I said, the majority of these two departments you're looking at, it's all, it's all your people. That's, that's the cost. The service department's down, like I said, 72%, but then again, like I said, the material supplies and services, they have more, more things they need to work with than, you know, the police have their cruisers and fire had their medic and engines, but, so their, their personnel costs are down a little more than the other two departments, but dealing with the material supplies and services they utilize. And then on the, on the golf, Meadowbrook, looking at 56%. Again, the largest expenditure is the people and then contractual services, material supplies. So, it kind of gives you a clue of, a picture of what we're looking at. And then we're talking about the personnel side of it, just comparing last year with this year's budget for, looking at the administration, it looks as an increase of 77. It's just dealing with steps and then we've kind of modified the budget a little bit. We've been without, we were without Seth for quite a while, so we didn't bring Ellen in, so... So, you're seeing an increase there. Meadowbrook, you're looking at a about a 4% decrease. Again, we got one less full-time person there with their benefits. The police is down with the one less officer, firing EMS. Is, next year's budget's a little, I've got in there with the battalion chief that's gonna be leaving. He has his payout of his leave in there, so trying to estimate what he's got, so there's a little bit of increase there. But they also have, you know, steps and then, and next year's a contract year too, so... And then services, just an increase of 3.4%, so not big, big jumps dollar-wise or percentage-wise, so... Pretty, pretty consistent there.
Just out of curiosity, with, in the case of the battalion chief that's leaving, so will that be a basically a one-time hit or is that, will we continue taking that hit from...
No, that's just, it's his leave, yeah.
Yeah, all of his payouts at retirement, that's one.
On the operating side... On the operating side, this year's budget, you'll see on the admin side's a kind of a bigger jump. But again, that's like I talked about, we budgeted for a full year of no, kind of having a clue of what to budget for the building department with the fees and what we, we pay the NIC for that. But all the other departments, they all have went through and looked at their budgets, cut as where they could. And you're seeing decreases in every one of those in the operating side. But again, you can make big cuts in operating, but it's not going to have that much of an effect since, you know, the, the biggest expenditure we have is people.
Kevin, how come in, under service, the, the operating expenses went down by a third and the personnel went up?
Yep, well. Right.
There's not going to be any leaf pickup, we know that.
So that's, that's the decrease in your operating. And then the, we went back and looked at what we have as salt inventory right now and what we're going to purchase next year and we, we cut some of that. So I said, they, they did go back, look and, and decrease all that where they could. Service is just, we, we do have some younger.
You said we're not going to have any snow or ice this winter, so we don't need much salt.
I know we do have, yeah, we do have two or three younger workers over there that are starting to, to get their steps and, and so. That's all I can, you know, kind of a, just a, putting in what their, what their steps are and their increases and we don't, we're not bringing on anybody new, so.
See, I think we only have one maintenance worker one now, right? Everyone else has moved up to maintenance worker two.
Yeah. All right, so. So this, I just went through and here's that spreadsheet you were asking about Dennis, projections. Went back and looked at trends and what we're seeing as far as increases in revenue or decreases, well, it was increase. And then as far as the expenditures, and you're seeing that, you know, over the years of 2017 through 2022, and I kind of backed out some of the, the COVID monies because it kind of skewed the results. But we had about a 9.6% increase in revenue over that time. But with the budgeted expenditures, we had about 14%, so you see there's, you know, you're looking at about 4% increase each year. That's, so expenditures are exceeding their revenues. So looking at this, you know, and hopefully we end this year better than what we're projecting based on truly budget numbers. But looks like we get to the end of 2025, we're finally negative, so, so we can get through next year and the, and the year after. But, you know, then after that, it starts going up because there's no money at all to, to take from the general fund.
And is that based upon our revenues being what they are today with?
I didn't, I didn't.
No development, no increase in income tax?
Right, I didn't, I tried to assume that we're going to, you know, what we're going to get from those. I took what, what's known and applied that in, in the analysis I did and projected it out. I know it's, you know, we're talking about cutting a lot of stuff. We do try to be frugal where we can. When I came in here, we had a fairly big balance in, it was Permissive Motor Vehicle License Tax Fund, it's Fund 403. And I was looking at the allowable expenditures and we utilize that fund to pay for our seasonal service workers. Cause they're out there cutting the, the, like on 49, they're cutting the grass on the sides of the road. So we can utilize that funding instead of taking from the service fund where they're getting transfers, so. So I utilize that fund for them. We have an OWDA loan that we pay on for some sewer improvements that went through North Clayton. So I allocated a percentage of that based on, you know, the, the amount of lines that went through North Clayton and utilized North Clayton's TIF to pay for, for those debt payments there. We do the same thing, if there's something on Main Street that we're planning on doing, we try to utilize the, the Main Street TIF to pay for that instead of CIP because we have dedicated funds and that's what the, the TIF was created for, so we utilize those. And we're always getting grants, we had the nature's works and CDBG we did for the parks and, and CDBG for demos. Utilized the ODOT safety projects to get work done on 49. Then we, like the code enforcement car, the admin staff cars, old, old police cruisers. We, we, you know, they can't be, we don't want them being in service as cruisers, but we'll utilize those as staff cars. So we're not, it's going out buying a new car for code enforcement or us. I mean, the fire inspectors driving around in a donated Nissan Versa, so we're, we're doing what we can. And then I talked with Randy today and, and we have either borrowed or, or lent equipment to Perry Township, Brookville, Trotwood, Anglerwood, and ODOT. So we're utilizing those relationships, so we don't have to go out and buy equipment that we use once or twice a year. We, you know, trying to do these shared services, so. As I said, we, we, you know, we, we take the budget and that's what I use every, I don't try to increase it and I stick to that. And that's why I say I move, move budget around where I can to make it work. So, you know, talking about cutting, you know, things that are near and dear to our citizens, it's not something you want to do. But, you know, reality is, we have to do something. So. What we're looking at, you know, is, this is just the fund by fund, what we're, we're asking for. And. And there's a little asterisk, can we get to the next page? I'll show you, I'll have, that will be the transfers amount. So we're just looking at, like I said, it's a lean budget, you know, all the department heads have worked, you know, with, with city manager to, to cut what we can. And what we're looking at there is for next year with the, with the transfers are about 3.4 million. Again, going into the police, fire, EMS, service and debt service. And that's. Uh, where are you looking at that? Oh. Okay, on Main, Main Street, we, we do debt payments out of there for the, the phase one of the street improvements that were back in the day. We have bonds that still outstanding on that, we're making payments on that as well as we have to do some of that. We have to pay the schools for their share of the TIFs, tax immit financing, so that's included in there. It's funded by the, her donation, it's an agency fund, so it's sending in, it's in, sending investments generating interest. So if, if, if the fire department ever needs to utilize those funds, we budget $1,000 just so they have something so they can go, we don't have to come ask you for appropriations. But that's being funded by, like I said, it's, it's from the donation she made via her will, so it's not really costing us anything. She's, she put in there, but it's on our books. If they, yeah, it's to help a family that had a fire and they need to be put up in a hotel or, or have some. No, no.
So Kevin, other than, I mean, as I understand it, and I, I hope I'm wrong, but what is budgeted for next year is basically a Band-Aid. That if we start going into 2025, 26, 27, we either get new revenue or we start cutting personnel in order to, to make ends meet.
Yeah, like I said, you know, if, when you look at those percentages, I mean, like I said, you could cut all your operation expenses, but you're still not making a dent really because it's all on personnel. That's what we have here, that's what we do, we provide the service to the residents. And with happening, you know, the police and fire is a 24/7, you know, departments, that, that adds up quick. And then I know on the CIP side, you know, we put off equipment and roadwork, so that, that's put you, you know, behind. Then we got, you know, two years worth of bad roads versus one. Hopefully our bucket truck makes it another year, so.
Just need a lot of pothole patching.
Yes.
That is all I have.
So do you have any happy news?
Let's see, um, it's been, end of year is always stressful, you know, Jack takes off two weeks, doesn't have anything to do. But I got to close the books and I'm trying to make the budget balance. All right, whatever, he's leaving, I don't care, so. But yeah, it is, this year has been, it's been really stressful. And I was looking at the budget today and I had my assistant, we usually we do, we, our pay our, our purse towards the end of, end of the month. But I said, I need you to do it today so I can see how much we have left in that account or how much I got to put back into that account. So it, it is, you know, it's, it's been a little more extra work this year, so.
And you may not be the one to answer this question, I may not be an appropriate question, but, you know, in light of everything where we're at at this point and moving forward, projecting moving forward, how long would it take essentially to, to stop this downward slide and try to start turning things around so that we're on a more positive point?
You know, I guess that all depends on, you know, our projections, if, if the, if the income tax levy does pass and it does bring in what we're, we're projecting. Also, if, you know, you're looking, it also depends on who comes into those new subdivisions and lives there, where they're working at, what, you know, how much they make, or if there's any, any other development at Spurs, because we are already seeing more people come into the community.
Like for instance, like the North Clayton, as far as there's, it's been, what, 18 months discussion back and forth? If that were to come to fruition and something start happening, how long would it take for something like that to actually impact the revenue stream?
I mean, it would be years, I mean, because even if they started building tomorrow, it probably wouldn't be out until, built out until 2030 at the earliest, yeah. Yeah, five to 10 years. And even if the income tax does pass in March, we're not going to see collections until 2025.
Right. And then with those, you know, like North Clayton, the income tax would start in sooner than the property tax would. Again, the property tax is just, you know, it's limited capped, so it wouldn't, again, that's what I said, you know, that.
Well, the, the levies are still stagnant in terms of the monies collected, it's going to stay the same.
Right.
Individual property owners might see a decrease, but.
Yeah.
The monies coming in would be the same regardless. But I mean, if you want to see a faster implementation of some revenue increase to buffer everything, you know, hate to say it, but you're talking about levy money?
We're talking about a change in the income tax.
Yeah, but that's, the impact on that is, I'm just saying, police and fires, which, you know, 50% of their budget's coming out of, you know, transfers versus the levies, which of course are supposed to be supporting them. To change that, it would mean levies going back to support that other portion that's currently being a transfer.
Yes.
With the implementation being that would be insurmountable and definitely something that people would not be looking at wanting to do. And I'm not advocating that, but.
Right. You know, based on, on our, our valuation, you know, the mileage that we'd have to put on for a levy would be considerable. And then, like I said, you know, then you're, you're waiting, you, that would go in place, but then you're going to be waiting a year, you know, you know, to collect it because property taxes in Ohio are a year and a rears and it's just not simple, so.
And doesn't that then, I mean, what we're talking about are short-term fixes? Because long-term fixes are going to depend upon the number of people that we have in Clayton, the number of people that are contributing to the income tax and where, and where we are at that time. I mean, it, it's.
It's a business structure.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we're really, what we're talking about tonight is emergency actions in the income tax to, to keep us from going in the hole in '25.
Right.
But that doesn't address 30. I mean, am I right or?
Right, I mean, you know, we are relatively young city, 25 years. You know, look at our neighbor next door, Anglerwood, I mean, they've got a lot of retail, they've got, you know, commercial, I mean, they've got a blend. And look at us, we're, like I, you know, we're a bedroom community, we're houses basically. So if we can get more of that blend and, and, you know, we have workers that are contributing to the, to the city, that definitely going to help us out. But, you know, again, that takes time to, to get that worked in. If it's just on, just on our, our residents, then I mean, that's a, it's a, you know, a bigger burden for them.
Well, I think that's, goes back to what we've said all along, we need the rooftops to bring in a business. Businesses aren't just going to come and build, and we have a lot of land out there that they could build on. But, I mean, businesses do research, they just don't buy land and start building. And if the research isn't there for them, they're not going to invest, you know, they're going to go right next door like they do. Or to Miami County like they do.
Next door isn't any bigger than we are by 100,000, 100 people, I think Anglerwood's 100 people bigger than we are.
Yeah, but it's a lot better mix in the business side.
Yeah.
That's, that's where it's night and day. Well, I just think they have time on their side.
If you read the reports, police reports, that's a good thing too, because everything in there is Walmart or Meyer or.
Yeah, and then, you know, they have the commerce park, you know, I know we had one that we, you know, we were still paying debt on, which was taken, you know, entirely by Caterpillar, which is not a bad thing, but, you know, to have something available for businesses to come into would be nice. But we don't have that right now.
Okay, well, thanks Kevin. Any other comments or questions for Kevin?
Just one Kevin, do you know if in '25 we can't meet our debts, what happens?
Then we're going to be in talks with the state auditor's office when they, you know, when we have our audits done in '24. You know, they'll be looking at our, our fund balance, I mean, Moody's or who does our ratings for our bonds, they, they do that every year too. They look and see what's going on, so, you know, it could be, you know, we get to that point, our, our bond rating's downgraded, which is not going to help us. But if it's looking that we're going to be heading towards, you know, a fiscal emergency, then there will be discussions with the state auditor's office as far as the state coming in. And, you know, they will cut and they will do what they need to do, so.
Happy holidays.
Yes. Hey Kevin, Kevin's the messenger, you know, so he's, yeah, so thank you. Appreciate the presentation and all the work it took to get together, so.
I move we close the workshop.
For a second.
Second.
Motion to close, close the workshop by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman, on favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that the workshop is closed. And we're going to take a couple minute break here while the computer gets refreshed and then we'll get started.